This is Monday, June 18th, 2012. I'd like to call the City Council Work Session. And tonight, while we're back, everybody's seen us. This is what our third meeting tonight, so we're all around the table and ready to go. We only have one item on the agenda, and it's information regarding the potential purchase of a Nita Business Development. And I'm not sure the order this is going to come in, but we'll start out with our city manager, Brian Dahlke.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we'll be talking about the potential acquisition of the Vanita Business Park, which is where we're sitting right now, by the way. So, we do have several slides we'll go over. I will be doing an overview, and then we do have staff available for specific questions, to include Rourke Massey, our attorney, Larry Lang. He's sitting up here, Finance Director. We have representation from the County Library District, and Cindy Kolazinski. I got the thumbs up, so I have that right, but she is a new Executive Director, fairly new Executive Director for the Maricopa County Library District. And then certainly, we have real estate staff in Linda Beal. So, I think that we have, our goal is, is to provide first an overview, and then try and answer any questions that the council may have. So, with that, really start off with what we feel are some of the key reasons for considering the purchase. And just for the public's benefit, tonight, of course, there is no action. We are looking at action next Monday night, if there is direction to go forward with this. But highlight a couple of points on the Vanita Business Park. You'll see them up on the slide here. I'll go into a little bit more detail. But one is, is it really helps us to be responsive to our citizen satisfaction survey. This was completed in 2011, so it's very recent information. And what it does is, just generally, it triples the size of the current library, and it doubles the size of Franklin Pierce University that currently has a program here in Goodyear. Franklin Pierce University is based out of Orange, New Hampshire. They've been operating in Goodyear for the last several years. The other thing that the acquisition would do, it would streamline us for public safety, and having the location here adjacent to Public Safety Administration. And lastly, this would give us, well, you'll see on there the city ownership. We're essentially looking at using the payments we're making now for three buildings, leasing three buildings, and using that like amount for debt service, if you will. So, no increase in our annual costs that we're looking at. I would add up, add that we're, it gives us certainty for our facilities in the future. Our facilities, we have three out of the five buildings now. We know that we aren't looking ahead in the near future to construct new facilities for the city, so it gives us that opportunity to make sure that we are covered. Vanita Business Park, it is 11 acres. It is located on Van Buren. The slide says west of Litchfield. That's true. It's actually closer to Bullard Avenue. But what you'll see on here, Van Buren, is on the top of the screen for those that are in the, from the public looking in. So, you'll see the boundaries that are outlined in black, and it does show the five buildings, as well as parcels of land that would be part of this acquisition as well. Total square footage of the buildings is just a tad under 89,000 square feet, so fairly sizable. City Administration, the three buildings that are outlined here in red, that's the buildings that we are in current leases with. They will expire May 2016 for two of the buildings. We go into a little extra time for the building we're in now, which houses a justice. It's called our Justice Facility that houses courts, prosecution, and certainly our council meetings, and P&amp;Z meetings, and many other public meetings. But we're in 61% of the buildings today. Development Services, that's the rectangle in the middle. That includes engineering, community development. We will be moving over building safety, economic development into that center building. The building on the right is where Public Safety Administration is. That's the fire and police that house that right now. Building on the left is the building we're currently sitting in, and that is, again, the Court Building. We actually got into these buildings in 2000, in May 2008, we began leasing this building. But before that, the other buildings we got into for engineering, or excuse me, the development-related building and the Public Safety Administration in 2006. So, we have been in there for quite some time. They're working well. And we, in 2011, we did renegotiate the leases, because we started looking at what's our ability to go out and build. When we were looking at City Hall, going over at City Center and the library, that was at a time in 2009 that we thought we were going forward with that. Because of assessed valuations, we weren't able to go forward to construct those buildings, so it's really forced us to get into the leases we're currently have at these buildings. Benefits of higher education. I talked about the citizen satisfaction survey a little bit earlier, and the number-one priority in that survey that our citizens asked for in terms of new amenities or expanding amenities in our community was actually higher education. What we are looking at is Franklin Pierce would actually be part of this project. If I back up and go to the, it would be the pink building on the north or the top of the slide. That is where Franklin Pierce University would be looking at going. So, it would, as you jump over to this slide, it would double their facility to 14,700 square feet. They are currently in the building that's just north of our current City Hall, so it's north of Van Buren, in a building totally unrelated to the city. And that would be the building they'd be moving out of and into this, into the building here at this complex. But it's important to point out, this, again, was a number-one amenity requested by our citizens, where 65% identified it as the highest priority. Franklin Pierce currently has a doctorate in physical therapy program here in Goodyear. But what this does, when they expand, it will add masters in public administration. It will also add bachelors in integrated studies. And that's one of those, just to explain that real briefly, what that does is, it allows undergraduates to not just focus on one degree, but it tries to round them out. They can have a couple of focus areas. It teaches critical thinking skills, problem-solving writing skills, and it gives them an opportunity to take that and perhaps get into other higher education, say, law degree, medical, MBA, MPA. I mean, there's several career or education paths that they can take once they get this degree. So, we feel like that could be very advantageous for our citizens. Benefits of the library, it was a number-two priority. So, it came in at 57%. Of our citizens said that they really wanted us to expand the library. If I back up to where the library would be, that would be, if you look at the pink built, portion of the building where Franklin Pierce University would be leasing, it's the part of that same building that is, I'll call it orange. I'm not sure that's-
Peach.
Peach. I'll buy peach. But that would be where the library would actually expand. So, the front of that would actually be the same as the front of the building we're in right now. So, it'd face out to, what is it, 145th Avenue? All right. I just had good assistance there. We're talking Franklin Pierce University right here, and this would be where the library's going. This is a building we're in right now, as far as the courts and prosecution along with City Council chambers. It is important to note, and while we're in these three buildings now, this other building up here at the northeast corner, the yellow portion is currently under lease with Cancer Treatment Center of America. They have an option on the, this building right here, adjacent to it. But what this purchase would do is, and this is a five-year lease that they're in now, so we'd essentially be getting rental income from that, as well as rental income from Franklin Pierce University. The building just that is, that is part of what we call Building C, we could use that for additional city services. We're looking, for example, of expanding the fire administration, moving them over to there, and then using this building for primarily police administration, gives them an opportunity to grow and do some different things that they're looking at. We could do questions in the middle. I have a total of nine slides, and we're about halfway through, so it's really up to you.
Well, I actually like them to stop in the middle, so we don't go backwards.
Okay.
Bill?
The, the only question I had was regarding that, moving police into one facility. Would that get them a little bit more corralled out of the three or four buildings that are down on Western and the one in the old Justice Facility? Would that help bring some of those together?
That is an excellent question. I'd have to ask staff to be able to answer that. I know that there are different ways of looking at it. So, Chief?
Good day to you, Mayor, council members. Councilmember Stitt. We would love to be able to do that. I don't know if that additional space would allow us to incorporate all of our patrol and all of our other units. However, I can see a good portion of them being able to relocate to one space.
Any other questions so far? Joyanne?
Can you, sorry, can you elaborate a little bit about the impact fees with, with the library? I know that one of the issues is, we have some impact fee money that's out there that if we do not use within a certain length of time, it's, it's gone.
Can, can I, just to interrupt, we have that on a slide coming up.
That is a little later in the presentation.
Can we just stick with, as we, as the presentation goes, rather than jump around? So, if you have any questions on the first few, three slides, okay?
Then one last one regarding the, the 911 Center. Is that coming up more about that too, as to why it's a better place here?
It is.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyanne.
Just, just one quick comment. I realize the library was number-two, but, and I know we're limited for space, but I sure wish that 6,600 were larger, just for whatever it's worth. But I know it's limited to the building that you have it on there, but I know we'd be tripling the size, but at some point, I really would hope that we try to work out a way to get something at least 10-plus, 10,000 square feet plus, so.
Wally?
Brian, on the, for the university portion, is 14,000 square feet roughly? 14,700?
Yes, 14,700 square feet.
What was the length of time that they would occupy that?
The, and the attorney can certainly get into some of the field points.
Just, just roughly, five years?
It's eight years with, what, one, two-year option?
It's a 10-year with two 5-year options.
Okay. So, the, then the-
Could you repeat that timeframe, because I'm not sure?
It's a 10-year with two 5-year options.
Thank you. Okay. But with us moving, if we move the library into the new area, if the, if the university were to move out, I would hope that the city would give the library first right of refusal to move over?
Understood.
If that would be okay. And, and then, on the other hand, I don't want to not keep on the back of our minds that we still could have another freestanding lovely library next to the city center.
And I, more discussion on this when we get to the impact. I think there's something that affects that, so.
Yeah, just, I don't, well, I don't want the residents seeing this, think that we're, this is the only library that we'll ever have. That's all I'm bringing up, not the money or anything. I'm just saying, if we can expand it even more, that would be wonderful down the road, and that the original idea of that we would have this beautiful rendition of the library that we all loved, could still happen some other time. That's it.
Parcel C, in the peach, I'm sorry, I think it's back a slide, when we were talking about that. That one is not the one Cancer Treatment has that lease option on, right?
Cancer Treatment is in this yellow building currently, a yellow portion of this facility currently. And they do have an option for this, I'll call it pinkish-
Pinkish-purple thing?
That one.
The 2,000 smaller part.
That, that's correct. That would be a total of about, if they do, do go ahead with that expansion, it'd be in and around 5,000 square feet.
So, parcel, the 7,290 right now is, that would be vacant space?
That's correct. That would be this portion here that we're looking at as far as expanding city operations.
Okay, so we could expand anything that we chose to police or whatever we felt needed in there. Nobody has a right to that one right now?
Correct. CTCI does not have rights to be able to lease that portion of that facility.
Okay.
So, it is up to us. It currently is programmed to move fire administration in there.
Oh, so it does, so you are saying that you do have some thought behind what may go in there then?
We do for city purposes. It's just that the, we do not have any non-city tenants that are looking at that space.
Yes, we can use it. Yeah, good. Okay?
All right, Brian.
We go back on the library. One of the things we really want to point out is, this is really one of the top-performing libraries in the Maricopa County Library District. And, you know, one of the things that we look at, a couple of facts, is we had 78,000 customers the previous fiscal year, with over 200,000 titles. So, it gets a lot of use. If we just look at our windows on a day-in, day-out basis, there's just people coming and going in that library. Again, taking it from 1,800 to 6,600 square feet. Sizable expansion. But one of the things is, it, it will provide, the current facility that we're in, the 1,800 square feet we're leasing, this one would actually be owned by the city. So, there's, there's a big difference. We have talked with the Maricopa County Library District. As I stated earlier, we do have representative from the Executive Director, Cindy Kolazinski, that can answer any questions while we're on the library portion. But they have been talking with staff, working on opportunities to how they would actually program this space. We're just getting into those discussions, but certainly, if there are any questions, press those at this time.
I have a question. At one time, you know, there was a lot of talk about different kinds of equipment that we might need for a library. And having gone into a smaller facility, I know we didn't, you know, requirement was not as, as great as it would be. So, I guess my question is, to furnish this library, are we going to get any help from the county as we were at the, at the original agreement? Thank you for coming to the table.
Thank you for inviting me.
Mayor and councilmembers, thank you so much. We were, we are currently in an governmental agreement to operate the facility that we're currently in. And that, of course, would be a discussion, again, as to how we would, what would be needed or required to get the workflow and to accommodate. As you know, your community has embraced this library tenfold, and we're excited for the opportunity to any kind of expansion.
Right.
But it would be a discussion as to how it will be set up for the infrastructure and for the technology piece, to see what would, we would be needed and what those costs would be.
Great. Yes, Bill?
Just out of curiosity, what is the smallest, aside from our 1,800-square footer? What's the next smallest?
There is a very small facility in Surprise, the Hollyhock Ranch, that is more of a historical site, that the city of Surprise pays us 110% to operate. And it is open a very limited amount of hours, and it is literally a living room space. But it serves that immediate walking to the library community.
Sure.
And it's very important to them.
Is, I guess what I'm trying to get to is what Councilman Pizzillo was talking about, is I'd really like to see us be knocking on the 10,000-square foot, and I believe that's the size-
I do, yes.
-of Litchfield Parks Library?
Yeah, close to it. In retrospect, in looking at what, you know, the city of Goodyear, would we, what we would really like to see is, yes, you know, 30,000 square foot, let's be quite honest. As in comparison to your citizen survey, we do a customer survey annually. And again, I'd be happy to share those statistics with you as well. But we get lots of comment from your community members as to how they would love to have programming at the facility, not off-site, and how they can expand the facility. As you know, workforce development is extremely important in our libraries right now, and, you know, we need to be able to offer that to our community members, so more space.
It's too bad the state doesn't, doesn't believe that a 30,000-square-foot library is important.
Joe?
Just a quick question. Can you expand on the workforce development in the library? I was just curious on that.
Sure. Yes, absolutely. We have teamed up with the state, and we are offering kiosks that are from a BTOP2 grant, federal grant, so that we have actual workforce development stations in all of the libraries. Goodyear is just currently too small. We don't have anywhere to put it, not a space. So, what this would give us the opportunity is to have this in, yes, this put in to that space as well. And what it is, it's just for resume writing. There's a fax machine attached to it. It's for job training. We have an instructor come out to help with job placement and whatnot. But we need a space, to be quite honest.
But this would, this would allow that to happen?
It'd be tight. It's, it's still going to be tight, but yeah, it, it could happen. It's just one station is what we would be able to add in a space this size.
But, but it sounds like a very worthwhile program. It would be nice to kind of put this piece in, in as you design this, this facility.
Absolutely, as well as an early literacy station, which is something that we offer at every single one of our facilities. That is, you know, is what we do. It's what library service is. So, again, we would have that space in this, in this expanded area.
Well, I think you hit on one of my questions, the expanded programming. I think that would be great to have, have in this space. And that's another reason I was wondering about that other space over there, if that's something that you could do, some programming over there, if that's a possibility, or if that goes over the amount to have two spaces together. I don't know. And then the other thing is, is when we do the library, our library is hidden. It is so far back there. It'd be nice to have a sign, like you see in other communities. I mean, it's a little thing, but in the letters on the building, it says "library." I mean, it really is. All these buildings are hidden on what we do, so I think we, I like that. Thanks.
Joe?
I wouldn't go with a digital, but I would, I wouldn't even mind a pylon, you know, owning the building that actually shows what's there, so you can find it.
A reader board. To that point, we are looking at certainly wayfinding monument sign that would clearly make this a city of Goodyear complex. So, those are absolutely being looked at as far as how best to have that done.
Any more questions on the library? Yes, Wally?
I just will, Cindy, I'm also president of the Friends of the Library.
Oh, well, thank you so much for your support.
Well, we love your library.
Another agency we couldn't do it now.
But I wanted to thank the county for your work with us, and we love our librarian and her staff, and, and it's a wonderful place to go. We're excited that we may be able to move it in somewhere bigger.
It's a wonderful opportunity for me. Excited as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Brian?
Going back to, I pulled up the city administration slide, but what we're looking at when I get into the 911 telecommunications dispatch center, that would be this parcel we're looking at where my cursor is. With the acquisition of the five buildings, we are, would be getting these three acres, which is this parcel and this parcel. The 911 Center would be going on the parcel where my cursor is right now. So, you can see the proximity that it would have to police. It's just immediately adjacent to that. And that brings us into how this will actually work by putting the 911 Center here. Very, a couple of points on that. We are, we do have construction documents that are all but completed for the 911 Center. We are, you know, at one point, we were looking at having it in the, what we call the Operations Center, which is more adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant. And looking at that, there are a couple of things that go along with that. As we look at our capital improvement plan, our ability to go out and actually fund, finance new facilities, we know that it's going to be eight to 10 years likely before we can do City Hall Library at City Center, based on our current projections of our valuation growth. We do have general obligation bond financing that will help finance that, but it really is incumbent upon the valuations to increase. We know that the Public Safety Administration buildings and training and those types of functions, it will be many years before we could actually construct those facilities as well. So, when you look at the consideration for the 911 Center being out in the, what are called the Operations Center near the wastewater treatment plant, it would be out there by itself for many, many years. We feel like with this opportunity to have this land as part of this project, it makes much greater sense. And then the other is, there is a benefit of staying within budget. As we looked at the infrastructure that was required to bring water, telecommunications, build out a part of MC85, the intersection on 157th Avenue, and bring it, bringing it to the 911 Center, that's close to, it's about $885,000 for just that portion of the infrastructure. We have been, you know, looking at that for the past couple of months, and it would, and by putting the project here, it brings us back within budget. So, that's a big consideration. Now, that was going to be funded, as you may recall, strictly from development fees. That would be both police development fees and some public works development fees as it relates to some of the roadways near there. But it does help it bring back into budget.
Questions? Okay, go ahead.
Some of the benefits, if we look at investment revenue, one is, is right now, the, we believe it's a good investment, because essentially, it just takes the lease payment that we're making on three buildings, and using a same amount of money to have five buildings, plus the three acres, for the same amount of money. I'll get into the finances in just a few minutes. But the, the key point is, is ownership versus renting. We think that that is a significant consideration. We will have ownership of the asset. It will be a location that we know that we can be in here for several years. You know, five years from now, four and a half, five years from now, as the leases expire, while we do have some options, you start to lose certainty. And we need to make sure that we can run the business, run the business of the city and have longer-term locations for our facilities. The other is, we'll be getting lease revenues. Certainly, Cancer Treatment Centers of America, they have, as I indicated, a five-year lease on, round numbers, about 3,500 square feet. But they would have an option to lease some additional facilities, but that is revenues that comes back to the city. No, we're not in the real estate business, but it is a very good use for that in the interim. What's good about that is, when that lease is expired, it gives us an opportunity to see how we might reprogram that for, for future city functions. Franklin Pierce University, there, there being a 10-year lease, as the attorney pointed out, that will be increasing over time, built-in lease payments. So, that will actually increase over time, and that will be a revenue source as well.
Well, I, just a comment there. I, for us, it's a positive, because we know that they wanted to expand, and they were looking around, and they were looking at other cities, because they wanted this expansion. So, I just feel that it's an answer to keeping the university we have and not losing them. And the idea that they're expanding their program is certainly beneficial to the community, and I can see in the next, more expansion, because they do have the room to bring other, other courses in there. So, I think it's a real positive direction for us. Yes, Joyanne? Did you?
No, not yet.
No, okay.
Okay, if we look at the, the purchase itself, there were two appraisals that were completed on the property. And I want to make sure that they're out there, that they're understood. The two appraisals that were completed, one at 9.2 million, one at 12.8 million. And it's very important to point out, as we see the differences in there, the lower appraisal, when it was done first, and some of the differences that were, that had, it came in a lower amount, certainly, it did not include the three acres of property that would include the 911 Center. It also did not look at the value, increase in value with Franklin Pierce University coming in, and, you know, ostensibly, where you would be at 100% occupancy, if you will. But that is, that portion- but that is, that portion, that, that them as a tenant increases the value of this property. So that was not factored in the first appraisal either. And that, by the way, Franklin Pierce University came to us from the current owners, which is Cornwall Corporation, they were already in process of working through that lease, they had their letters of intent completed, a lot of the due diligence had been completed, so we are inheriting that, if you will, and then working through the details, our attorney's office is working through those right now. But certainly that was not considered when they were looking at the, at the value of this building. The other is, the second appraisal looked at a little bit more current market conditions with the occupancies that are going on now in our marketplace here in Goodyear. That is, it's, the occupancies are higher, therefore creating a higher demand for facilities, which increases the cost of real estate. So with those, our attorney's office has been heading up the negotiations, what they have negotiated, and that also includes the leases of CTCI and Franklin Pierce University, as I pointed out, a, an amount of 12.2 million dollars. So that is a purchase price amount that, that would be part of this, that would be this acquisition, and then I'll get into a couple more details on the financing in just a second.
Questions?
The financing, the top of the slide, we're looking at the purchase price, it's 12.2 million dollars, and if you look at the tenant improvements, and the question was asked what the, of the library, they will be doing the operations. We are budgeting $1 million in, in tenant improvements, that is paid for from impact fees that, that we already have on hand. We're looking at part of the tenant improvements, where the current estimate is $800,000, and that is based on preliminary space plan that's been completed, we'll be getting the construction documents, I believe, sometime this week?
Yes, hopefully at least by Friday, definitely by Friday, hopefully by Wednesday.
So, we will be getting those in, and we'll, we'll be able to really refine those numbers. The other is, is there's an economies of scale, when you build, the build out of Building A, which is for Franklin Pierce University and the library, you get all that, hopefully we can come up with an economies of scale of doing construction simultaneously, so we, we're hopeful there, we just have to work through some of those details. The other tenant improvements, that is a placeholder, that is an area where we will have some offsite infrastructure, getting utilities back to the telecom 911 on the three acres. It is also for some of the build out for moving, relocating the fire administration to Building C, as well as a contingency that we have in there, so we know that we can stay within budget. You know, because truly, we're, we're still working through some of the details, and we'll, we'll refine the numbers, but we feel these are conservative, and this is excellent for estimating purposes as we go through the financing. The cash available for impact fees, and that is, it's really four different impact fees that we're looking at using, and the finance director can get into more detail if needed, but it's $1.9 million in library impact fees, 1.8 million in general government development fees, $675,000 in public safety, and then finally, $500,000 in public works development fees that will be used as part of this. So when those are used, that's cash we already have in hand in those development fee accounts, that brings the amount financed to about 9.9 million dollars. Issuance costs, and I'll let the finance director explain those, but that is an estimate right now, we'd look at, be looking at financing 10.1 million dollars. Before I jump into what that means in terms of payments, that will be the next slide, it is important to point out that with the change in state legislation, there are, will be restrictions on the use of development fees. And it is important to point out that, for example, as pointed out, you can't use development fees for libraries over 10,000 square feet, we had looked at, you know, 30,000 square feet for our library over the city center, but there are restrictions, this is its ability for us to use those while we're still within the, the current legislation.
But didn't I have a time frame on some of those?
Yes, under, under the legislation passed last year, you had up to, for the fees you can't collect any further, that's i.e. libraries over 10,000 square feet, and we were collecting for 30,000 square foot library, you needed to actually use those fees by 2020, or you couldn't use them for that purpose. So this does give you the benefit of.
Using the fees before, yeah.
In the context that you adopted them for, we'll have to readopt fees in 2014 under the current legislation, so we have a, you know, we are cleanly collecting fees at that point forward for whatever future expansion we have for the library, so it's kind of a clean use of those fees that have already been collected.
And Joanne, you had an impact fee question earlier, I'd like to ask that.
That actually answered it.
That answered it, okay. Any other question on that? Okay, Brian?
Lease versus own, this is just a comparison of what we're paying now rent payment for our three buildings, $925,000 of CAM savings, these are the savings in the second year, and this is, really, it's about the property tax, this would be taken off the tax rolls, so we get a second year, once it becomes, comes off of the tax rolls, we would get that savings. We would get rent income, that's, that's factored into this as well, $228,000, so the total available for payment, you'll see, is one point, estimated at 1.283 million. The amount financed at 10.1 that I explained on the slide previously, given the interest rate, and there is, is interest, strong interest in this, and certainly had the finance director address that, but we're looking at a term of around 10 years. And the payment would be for all five buildings, with the three acres actually estimated slightly less than the lease payments we're paying right now for the three buildings.
Bill?
That, I understand, our monthly payment, if you will, is not going to change, and we're actually going to receive more, so that's pretty simple. Larry, my question for you is the, the financing option, we're choosing to go bank finance as opposed to bonding. We do have bonding authority, so is there a, can you explain the advantage of using bank financing?
Yes, Councilman Stipp, the, the bank financing, first, first I want to start with the basic concept of the financing structure. You hear about where we have debt capacity. Generally, debt capacity refers to when you are backing, you're securing the debt with property tax. We are not securing this with property tax revenues, we do not have the ability to increase property taxes by doing this transaction. What we are securing it with is the property itself, it's a real estate transaction, so the rules there get different. Because of the nature of this particular transaction, Cancer Treatment Centers of America, for example, is a for-profit corporation, so a portion of our financing will be taxable. And to do that with bank financing is a lot easier, to have the lender at the table as you're structuring the documents. And we have five banks that have expressed interest in the transaction, we talked with one today, I've got another one that, while I was out of town, called me and emailed me with his contact information, he really wants to talk about it. The 4% interest rate is a placeholder, but we do believe that we will be able to obtain financing at an interest rate at or below that level.
Any other, yes, Bill?
No, that was it, thank you.
Joanne?
There had been previous discussion on actual policy that our city has regarding debt, and that when the recession hit, it took us past that policy, and that we were just, so if I'm, remind me if I'm, I'm going down the right road here. And so this year, actually, we were coming back out of that position and adhering to our policy. Does this debt take us back below that policy level? And, and I'm only asking this because of our due diligence for our citizens and what our policy has stated. I believe this is a good investment. How long, if, if in fact, we are putting ourselves below that threshold again, how long will it be before we are back out of that position?
That's a good question. First of all, let me answer the question on, or explain what the policy, in the, the policy indicates that debt service paid for by the general fund will be 10% or less of general fund revenues. The general fund revenues in this year's budget, don't have it right in front of me, but I, I want to say approximately 65 million for very round numbers. That means it'll support a total of about 6.5 million at the 10%. Our annual debt service that's paid for out of the general fund is currently about 6.2 million before this transaction. So this will bring us to a total of about 7.5 million, that will put us just a little bit above that limit. That obviously is a city council decision to look at. What I will tell you though, as part of this, this is the interesting accounting standard that is being reviewed on an international level. Leases, such as the leases that we're in, in the Vanita Building for accounting purposes are not treated as liability, because you do not owe on that for an extended period of time, but they're truly a liability. We have to pay through the end of that lease term. So that doesn't count towards the 10%, because my profession has determined that that five, six, eight-year lease is not what we refer to as a capital lease. The international accounting standards are focusing very heavily, a major project on that accounting treatment of it, and I bring it up to you just as, I, I'm not suggesting that the policy is poor or, or anything, but I do bring it up to you as a, as a frame of reference, you're taking the same dollars, one is not called debt, the other, you are now calling it debt, and it will put you over that limit.
Well, and I appreciate that, and I just wanted to bring it up because it is policy that we have, and, and it was something that I wasn't going to just ignore. However, when it comes to this situation, I feel that this is answers to many questions that we had in front of us. I think that being able to have at least three more years that would have been a lease money that was just kind of, you know, thrown, I, I hate to say thrown away money, but this, this will actually be money going towards some, some actual property of ours. I, I think that, you know, there's many, many good reasons why we would want to, to go forward with this. Thank you, Larry.
Yes, Joe?
First, I want to thank you and Brian, we had what, about an hour, no, no, about 30-minute, I guess, conference call, talking about a lot of this finance, explaining and going over and getting my questions answered, but the comment I want to make is I appreciate your explanation on the accounting process, but in, but in reality, the money of the 1.2 that you're paying for lease is coming from the general fund anyway, just like debt. But also that 1.2, what percentage, I don't know if you know that off the top of your head, was, is actually principal, because now we're going to own it after 10 years, so if you take that into consideration, actually, from a liability standpoint, it's dropping, you got, because you got principal being paid on there, not just a lease payment where you have nothing to show for it. So when you take it in that perspective, it's actually from a liability standpoint going down, even though it doesn't meet the quote accounting scanners you're talking about. But to me, if you're paying lease or whatever, it's still coming out of your general fund, so.
Because the structure of this, we'll keep it real simple, obviously you all understand amortization schedules, you pay interest higher first than the principal bills, but on average, over a 10-year period of time, which is our proposed financing structure, $10 million over a 10-year period of time, you're paying $1 million in principal each year. And so that would say that 283,000 on average is going towards the interest portion, and the remaining is going towards your principal.
Sherri?
I, I agree with what Joe was saying about the, that we have an asset, I think that's really important to keep in mind, that we're going to have an asset at the end of this, and I understand what you're saying about the economic and accounting standards, it seems like they don't consider that you get an asset from it, doesn't play into that at all. And I do agree that I think it, it answers a lot of these questions, in five years, we're not going to have to look for another lease with very limited options in this city, and 10 years down the road, when we build, we'll still have an asset to sell, or, or rent out or do as we, we please, that will be 12 million plus, because I assume we're at the bottom of the real estate curve, and we're at the bottom of the interest rate curve, so it looks like financially, from what you're saying, it's probably not going to get any better to buy property than it is at this point, and to have something to do. On saying that, is there a way, if, obviously, if, if the general fund improves in the next 10 years, that we can pay off this, will that be allowed as part of the agreement to pay it off early? Or would that not make financial sense if we're down under a 4% interest rate?
At this point in time, we are not far enough into the lending side to be able to answer that. Oftentimes, on a traditional bond issue, they require you to go out 10 years before they allow prepayment. I don't want at this point in time to speculate on what type of penalties they would have, but I would think because it's banks, and what, the way they're lending at this point, we may be able to have some prepayment options available as the circumstances warrant.
Any other questions? Brian?
Thank you. And next steps are that we will be before council this, next Monday, for formal action by council. But I do want to just quickly summarize, not to beat this to death, but, but very quickly, for a lot of things been talked about, this brings us, brings a larger library, it brings us higher education, it brings us a locate, a better location for the 911, a less expensive location for the 911 center. We have five buildings, five buildings that we will be able to have longer term. We're not sure, you know, how long Cancer Treatment Center will stay in there, we have options where we can move operations. It is close to the interim office building, the current city hall that we're in now, it just has, we think, a lot of advantages, plus meeting the citizens' request for some of the amenities that we bring into this community, they're clearly number one and two would be part of that. And, and just financially, we think it makes a great deal of sense. So we are very interested in working through a lot of details, I want to give credit to city attorney, you know, Mike Swetzel, the bills, they've been working very hard on this. We also have a, a collected, to say Regis Reed that's out there in the audience, who is our 911 expert, and will be the project manager for this, who's chomping at the bit to see how we can do a very good job on this and, and keep it affordable. He likes to, you know, keep costs contained, so we just have, have a team that's already assembled that can get on this fairly quickly, already is working on it, if council does give us that direction next Monday.
But as I look around this table, I've seen nothing but positive remarks and nodding of heads, so if nothing else happens between now and next week, and I can't believe we aren't going to hear some calls and some emails, but I think a lot of it will be positive. Joe?
Just, just one follow-up comment, we've already mentioned it, is when you work with the library, you know, try to look at some of those programs, even if the building, she may have to work a little bit to try to get some of those special service programs that she talked about, on job training and whatever, let's see what we can do to kind of work it in to our building to, to help our constituents.
They could, even on job, I mean, if you housed them in a separate building, it's two entities, they, I mean, that, that would take it away from the other part of it, it seems to me it would be workable.
I, I like some of those programs she mentioned, so if anything we can do to, to put that in there, I think that would be great.
Thank you. Well, certainly, we, we have a great relationship, thank you very much, with the library, and we'll work very closely with them to look at what we can do, given the buildings that we have to work with.
Okay, great. Well, I think this ends this meeting, do you have any reports, council, that you want to give to the public?
Just one real quick.
Joe?
You know, a, a tip of the hat to the staff, I don't know who was all involved, but I read this month's InFocus, and I really appreciated the tone, I really appreciated the subject manner, I really appreciated the information that was in there, that was getting out to the public, it's different than in the past. It's different than in the past. I appreciate that change, and please thank everybody who worked on it. I'd like to continue, I'd like to see you continue that same theme, because I was very pleased with what I saw in the InFocus this time, so tell them a big thank you. I don't know who they all were, but I really appreciate those efforts.
And a lot of that credit goes to Robert Johnson, working closely with Romina, and our creative staff, that's part of Communications, Michael Leoni.
Yes, Mike did a great job in getting that all in there, yeah.
Robert, he is a good writer, he is.
I appreciate it, so just thank him for me.
You bet. I think Robert's in the audience as well, hiding in the back.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Brian, do you have anything you want to add into the, Sheri, I'm sorry, excuse me, I didn't see you.
I just have two questions. We got an email from one of our citizens about Memorial Day. I know you responded as well, and that's something maybe we could look into doing something small, or, I mean, it doesn't have to be big, expensive. I asked them to send me ideas, you know, if citizens want to do something, but it would be nice, maybe, if we could do something around the Memorial Day holiday, because we do a great job for Veterans Day with the Pebble Creek Parade, but it'd be nice to maybe to do something to acknowledge, you know, even a ceremony at one of the, the new park where they put the monument. And then the other thing that came up last time, we were talking about the billboards, we were talking about distracted driving, and that got me thinking, as I almost got hit twice within the last week from people texting on the phone, that I know some cities have texting ordinances, because I don't believe there's a state law that covers that, if that's something. I know Phoenix has a texting ordinance, and I don't know how successful that is, but that would probably be something, I wonder if we could maybe look at their ordinance and see if that's anything that we could do, or if anything's being done on the state level at that.
We could certainly look at what Phoenix is and other cities in the Maricopa County area, and we'll take a look at it, we'll come up with, we can come up with an assessment of that and provide it back to council with a recommendation.
Good, any other questions?
And that would be likely in the fall. We're going on break July 9th, so that would be, would be in the future.
So next Monday, Monday, the 25th.
25th, yeah. Yes, Joanne?
I just wanted to remind everyone, and I'll probably mention it again next Monday, you know, this is the time of year, we all know how hot it is, and this is going to be a pretty hot week, and MAG has a great program with heat relief network sites of water and cooling stations for our vulnerable and our homeless. And just wanted to remind people out there that if they would like to donate water, there are 77 sites across the valley that would be happy to take that water, and, you know, we all remember that this is the time of year, this is kind of like, this is our water, this is our weather crisis, this is our flooding time, this is our, you know, in our valley, it's the heat. And so we have to think about the people that are most affected by it and the animals, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, thank you. Any other comments? Well, I'm going to adjourn this, yes?
Mayor, thank you very much. Last thing I was going to point out is, we, council took action a week ago Monday on the Development Services Department. End of last week, we were actually out on the street with the Development Service Director recruitment, and I do have handouts for council. The brochure that we developed for this all in-house, and we're doing this recruitment in-house, does show council prominently on the front cover, that is doing a groundbreaking for Dick's Sporting Goods. But I think what you'll see, this is a combination of HR, human resources, and Winnetread, her staff working on the copy, and then Michael Leoni over in graphics to pull it together, but I think it's very presentable, I think it represents us well, and I'll hand these out to council before we head out.
Thank you.
I'll be sending it to England.
Any other comments? All right, with that, we're going to adjourn this meeting, and we'll be meeting on the 25th of June. Thank you. We're done.